Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled school board meeting, June 28, 2021. Before we begin the work of the district, let us stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent?
Or do you have any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda for this evening?
No, ma'am.
If not, please note that there is a revised attachment for items 9.01 and 9.02 that were provided to you. This time, I recommend approval of the minutes from the school board workshop, June 7, 2021. So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four aye. Okay. We're now at public input. I want to first say, the Lake County School Board welcomes everyone here. This time is set aside for the citizens of Lake County to address the school board. This is not a question and answer time. It is not a political forum, nor is it a time for personal accusations or derogatory remarks to or about school personnel, or about our kids. If you wish to address the school board, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name, address for the record, and limit your comments to not more than three minutes. Your participation from all here is welcome. So we'll go for the first card, which is...
Hey, Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. We have a change in the agenda. Dr. Burns has asked for a moment to give a statement, so we'll give this time to her first before public comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I believe deeply in our right to free speech, and I've always thought that this was one of the things that makes our country and this community great. Here in Lake County, citizens have the freedom to come before their elected representatives in hopes of redress. It was not that long ago that I was on the other side of the podium, talking about recess and excessive testing. Sometimes these conversations get fiery and tense. We are discussing our children after all, so passions can run high. This was the situation at our last school board meeting. Before that meeting, and in the days since, I've watched and listened as grownups in our community mocked district and school staff, teachers, and the work that we all do every day to help these students. Perhaps it's not their intent to cause harm, but their attacks have consequences on people, programs, and practices that can help our kids. This breaks my heart and is why I reacted. I do, however, regret that I did not respond more calmly. We have said already that we will not teach critical race theory in our schools, and the superintendent has invited the public to let us know if concerns arise. I have been actively listening to all my constituents to work on a path forward. I want to assure parents and constituents that we will not, as Governor DeSantis said, teach children to hate America or to hate each other. That is not the goal in our schools. We will not indoctrinate children in Lake County. This is our community. Most of us have kids or grandkids in the schools, and we all know there are good, hardworking teachers that teach our kids. We teach reading and math and science, social studies, and history here. In Florida, history is governed by the next-generation sunshine standards. Our history books are approved by the state. In Florida and in Lake County, we teach the history of all the people and cultures that make America what it is, and that is in accordance with the Florida standards. We have tried to present everything that the district has done publicly so that no one felt misguided or misled. Every day, students in Lake County are encouraged to read, write, think, and talk about their work with other students. In this way, students can deeply engage in thoughtful discussions about American and world history. Right now, we are emerging from a pandemic. This has probably been the hardest year any of us have known. Our kids have suffered this year, and many experience significant learning loss, known as the COVID slide. It is a time that we really need to come together, Lake County. We need to exchange ideas and stand united behind our kids, all of our kids, those who need support because they are falling behind, and those that need support so that they can excel. I invite parents, students, and all of our stakeholders to join us to be part of the solution. Let's come together and realize that we are all on the same side. We are on the side of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. And before we begin public input, I'd like to recognize, we have two mayors in our room. We have Mr. John Christian from the city of Leesburg and Mr. Pat Kelly. Thank you very much for coming and being with us. And we'll go right into public input. May Hazelton, Hazleton?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is May Hazelton, and I live in Eustis. I would like to correct something that was said during the June 14 meeting. Christopher Ruffo did not create the term or any aspect of critical race theory. That was done by others like Kimberley Crenshaw back in the 80s. What Ruffo did was almost single-handedly create the national conflict around CRT so that even when you, this body speaks about their efforts at equity learning, there is suspicion that it somehow is a cover for CRT. They are not connected. You see, Ruffo thought the phrase CRT was not only a better description of what some were opposing, but it also seemed like a promising weapon. Equity education should be at the top of everyone's list, everyone's must-have list to you, to our school board. But Ruffo knows CRT's connotations are all negative, and strung together, the phrase "critical race theory" connotes hostile, academic, divisive, race-based, poisonous, elitist, anti-American. That's his boogeyman. That's his boogeyman present to us, his fog factor. Ruffo's campaign against critical race theory represents a familiar effort to shift the point of an argument so that rather than being about structural racism, it is about seminars that have proliferated to address structural racism, or not teaching all children the totality of American history, or in our case here in Lake County, the fear of equity learning. Ruffo's intentional misuse of the term "critical race theory" was itself an effort to emphasize a deep historical and intellectual pattern to anti-racism, and he found it predictable that people encountering it for the first time would be outraged by it. You've seen that response right here in this room when we talk about equity learning. But the two aren't connected. They aren't connected. DeSantis has banned CRT from our school curriculum, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't have a clear idea of what CRT really means and not interpret it so broadly and clumsily as to see it as a boogeyman so that the very mention of equity education is seen as an attempt to destroy our education system. Could it be that the big disparity that you mentioned on June 14th in the achievement gap in black children can be partly attributed to the fact that they are taught to see the country sometimes, oftentimes feels very foreign and alien to them, that their way of seeing the world is not worth seeing? This is what equity learning hopes to address. Let us not be polarized by fear mongering, running from our own shadows. His... Our children deserve better, and I bet you, our children actually know better.
Thank you. I apologize. Mayor Christian, I didn't see your card here, so it's up to you.
I'm next.
You're next. So Mayor Christian, if you'll give your name and address and your phone number for the record, and then you have three minutes. Or you can take longer.
My name is John Christian. Address is 903 County Road 468, Leesburg, Florida. I'm here tonight, not eloquent as Ms. Hazleton, but I'm here to address the school board in the citizens of Lake County. I believe, and I'm going to say that, I think the Lake County School District is doing a fantastic job as relates to equity education of our administration and our staff. I've got several calls from principals around Lake County, not just in Leesburg, that I'm concerned, when I watched your June 14 board meeting. When I watched it, I saw the tenor and the tone that was here on the podium. And as a public servant, I can tell you that, you know, sometimes we get vilified for the things and decisions we make. I don't know why the Equity Conference was canceled. That's not in my preview, but I can say that it's very much needed, not just in our school board, but also in our local communities. I believe that this time politicians, elected officials have to be firm and strong and know to do the right thing, we do it, and even to face the criticism. As the superintendent said, the critical race theory cannot be taught in Lake County public schools. And I can say, growing up in the Lake County school system, graduating in 1999 at Leesburg High School, I was mystified to learn that I did not know who Virgil Hawkins was. Right here in Okeahumka, the very black man who was not afforded opportunity to go to law school, but fought to integrate at University of Florida Law School. Right here in Okeahumka, I'm in Leesburg. We have Black History Month. Every year, no one mentioned Virgil Hawkins. No one mentioned the Grover Ford. Isn't it something here in Lake County, we hide history because we want to pretend like it didn't exist? Well, can you imagine what that little black boy myself, who had heard about Virgil Hawkins, what that would have done for me to say, I can do more, I can change my community as well as the state? So don't, so don't, don't bow to pressure to not educate our children. We should challenge our children to think beyond what they see. I have biases. You all have biases. My wife has biases. So we talk about how people's hair is different, they tattoo the earrings. We all have our own biases. And to challenge our biases, how can a teacher teach our students such a diverse population in Lake County, and we're not going to challenge them, look into themselves and say, I can challenge and teach every student, whoever comes into my classroom? So I encourage you, Mr. Chairman, school board members, and superintendent, let's make sure equity training is at the forefront of every school, every administration, to make sure that every child that enters our campus has an opportunity to learn. And we challenge them to look past what they see in their home, even in their church, because in my church, I have three campuses, and the majority of my congregation is African-American. And that may be all they see until they go off to college. I don't want to send our children to college, and they're not prepared for what real life has to hold for them. They're going to find bigotry, they're going to find racism, they're going to find intolerance. Let's make sure we prepare our children for the real world.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. Courtney Franklin? Mrs. Franklin, when you come up, if you'll give your name, address, and phone number, and you have three minutes.
Courtney Franklin, 820 Crook Branch Drive, Claremont, Florida. Superintendent, school board members, good to see you all. I am the mother of now three Lake County school graduates, and I've been a Lake County teacher for 10 years. I've also been a Lake County school board watcher for quite a while now. And one of the things that I've always loved about living and working in Lake County is that I feel like everybody has a voice. Obviously, they wouldn't be here if they don't think they had a voice. And the changes that have gone on over the years in the county, I could go on and on about the positive changes that the school board has made, about the superintendent has made over the last 10, five, 10 years, that have all been good for kids, and the hard work they've done to keep up with the ever-changing world. And those ever-changes, those changes seem to be endless. And when issues are brought to their attention, or to the attention of the superintendent, they are discussed, and we find a way to do what's best for kids. And that's my main point of my comments today. I've been at home watching the last couple meetings, and I just wanted to say that I've been around for a long time, more than a decade, watching school board meetings, and that always the ending factor is it's not the parents against the school board, it's not the parents against the teachers. We are all on the same side. We want to keep our kids safe, and we want to educate them. I won't say it's a perfect system. And I appreciate when people bring attention to a problem that has to be fixed, because I know it takes all of us, every teacher, parent, and staff meeting, to do the most important job that there is. If we have a policy that needs changing, let's do it. But please know that we, as a school system, teachers, parents, the school board, staff, we all have to be united as one, follow the facts, and get the job done.
Thank you, Mrs. Franklin. Reverend Michael Watkins?
Good evening, Reverend Michael Watkins.
You heard my drill, though, right? About the three minutes and all that part?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good.
Oh, you say that because I'm a preacher, right?
Yes.
We have a little experience on the board with preachers.
805 Summer Raw Avenue in Tewerys. I watched the June 14 meeting, and there was things I heard about rights. I understand. People were saying they have a right where they don't have to wear masks, their kids don't have to wear masks. And I hear that, and I respect individuals. I just want to bring to this board something else about rights. I heard someone talking about, maybe a teacher or a principal, shouldn't be working for the school system because they didn't kneel down, or they didn't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or National Anthem. Every time we have it, I will stand and hold my hand up to my heart, because I served in the military, and that's what I feel like I should do. But when we talk about rights, just like people have a right not to wear masks, or people got a right not to do this and that, well then, other people have a right to not stand and hold their hand. That's just their right. Unless it's illegal with the school system, then people have a right to do what they do. That's why we live in this great country. People have a right. So what I'm asking you all is to don't be bullied or being pressured to acknowledge certain people's rights, or certain people say they have rights and don't think about those other people's rights, even though you may not agree with it. But it's about rights. Like I said, I always put my hand in my heart. But my neighbor or the person next to me, they have a right to sit and do what they want, as long as they're not breaking the law or interfering with anybody else. Some people, the way they carry themselves, it's like rights are only for certain people, but it's for all U.S. citizens. All of us have rights, even if we agree with them or not. And I encourage you, I know you all got hard work to do, I know you got a tough job, but I would say don't let nobody pressure you into adhering their rights and then neglecting somebody else's because it does not agree with what they feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Irina Jasper? Oh, I totally screwed that up. Sorry.
Good evening.
Okay, so your name and address, and then you have three minutes. Thank you.
Sure, great. Once again, my name is Dr. Erica Jasper. I am a resident of Leesburg, Florida, 2110 Johns Avenue. I'm here tonight to help encourage the Lake County School Board to encourage you all to vote and pass the equality, the equity bill that we have before us. I am a world traveler. I have traveled over 23 countries. I have been a missionary at hand before. And one thing I've noticed throughout my cultural diversity and being around different people with different cultural dynamics, language dynamics, it has made me more sensitive in understanding why they do what they do. Even being in the hospital, I'm a pharmacist by trade from day to day, and understanding some of the decisions that we have to make based on patients and their decision-making, why do they do what they do, because of their culture dynamics. So I just want to encourage you that we, yes, we are all the same, but yet we're all so different. You know, I've heard people say we can do things so differently, but yet come to the same result. And I just want to encourage you, I think diversity is so important, because we are here in central Florida. This place is a big melting pot. People are moving from the north to the south. They're moving from the west to the east to come to Florida. And our children, that's what we're talking about today, which is our future, they're going to be in a cultural dynamics where diversity is at key. Even in the work environment, cultural diversity is so key, is so vitally important, and so therefore comes equity and equality for everybody, all races, all cultures, all religions, cultural dynamics, equality. And that's what I want to encourage you guys. Our kids need to know that, our teachers need to know that, because it makes you more compassionate. And I can understand a person better. I can understand why they make decisions that they do if I can basically understand where they're coming from. I work with people from different racial backgrounds, religious backgrounds, and it makes me understand them better if I sit down, I talk to them, and understand the whys. Why do you do this? Well, help me understand why this. Okay, when you make that decision, I can better understand. Oh, okay, that helps me understand. So as we move forth in the new millennial, our kids need to have this, our teachers need to know this, because we're preparing them for the future and their professional environment, cultural diversity, ethnicity, equality. They need to know. They have to know. I just want to encourage you all with that. They have to. So that's my remarks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Danny Page? Mrs. Page, if you'll give us your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Danny Page, I'm with Inside Claremont, P.O., Box 2314, Claremont, Florida, 34712. First, I'd like to start off by thanking Mr. Dodd over here to my left for reaching out to me personally via telephone a couple weeks ago, I think it was a couple weeks ago. Thank you very much for that. He was actually apologizing on behalf of Kristy over here, who obviously couldn't do it herself, via her slanderous remarks that she gave last meeting toward me. Those comments didn't really age well, did they? Based on that issue, I just wanted to take a moment to request, moving forward, with your vetting processes for teachers, staff, for Yale schools, that you might want to put a resolution in place on how you do things when it comes to vetting. As you might be well aware, maybe not, I'm sure Mathias is, I went over with a fine-tooth comb a certain coach's application and resume and references. There was quite a few things on there that were inaccurate, used phone numbers twice, phone numbers didn't belong to the people that supposedly a certain principal, our assistant principal, Eastbridge, was calling. So again, without going into it, you might want to look at his actual application, resume, and references, and you'll find it all yourself. So I questioned that because it was all messed up. Nothing matched. So there was some shady stuff going on with his hiring process, and so I really feel like it's imperative that you incorporate some sort of resolution moving forward for your new teachers coming in, that somebody other than a principal does the vetting, does the phone calls, perhaps HR. I would think HR would handle it anyway. So it was kind of new to me that a principal would be doing this stuff and not HR. That way, there is no questions about who knows who, who's lying for who. Phone numbers have to match. You can't pretend like you called somebody when the phone number doesn't match, and you use that same phone number for a different reference in a different state. And again, I really encourage you all to look at that application, resume, and references, and you will see what I'm talking about. There was a lot of lies on there, not only the Alabama thing, but other stuff. So I just really, really, really encourage you to put a resolution forth moving forward that HR starts handling these hires, because we can't trust the principals of these schools to be doing it.
Thank you, Mrs. Page.
Claire, thanks.
Thank you. Kathy Smith? Mrs. Smith, you know the drill.
I know the drill. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you this evening. I haven't been here for a while, but I'm here to announce that the voting today was overwhelmingly yes. So we have a contract for 2020, 2021. And I want to thank the board for understanding that our more experienced teachers did need a little more money. Unfortunately, our legislators don't seem to see that, so we have to do what we can to help all teachers, not just some of them. So thank you.
Just to tag on to that, what you were speaking about is our teacher contract. So everyone from the district to your team, kudos. And it's only the second time in my service that it's happened before school starts, so that's amazing.
That was actually the last year.
Well done. Okay, Mr. Sardar?
David Sardar, 66 Winter Green Drive, Footland Park, Florida, 34731. I've been in front of your board before. I've been in front of the Marion County Board of Schools, and Bemar County, and Sutner County, and I've been to Tallahassee in meetings on education. I just left Mayor Buddy Dart, and in Orlando. No, I'm rooted in God. I've been to the school board meeting, and, you know, our... I've been to the school board meeting, and you know, our Florida religious heritage. Now, I played sports in this bag. I've got a basketball, I've got a baseball. It's a Sox bag. You know, I'm from Chicago land, where Elvis Presley sings about the ghetto, and the winds are blowing, and a little boy, all by himself, gets to be angry, pulls out a gun, and, well, the end isn't very good. Families mean a lot. My dad died on Flag Day, and my dad was the principal, same school he went to. I mean, do we know every, I love history, every president of the United States. You know, I've lived through the Martin Luther King era, I've lived through violence, where a lot of my friends are interracial kids. I used to date a Johnny made Christmas, Waukegan, Illinois, and, well, I used to work at Leesburg High School as a custodian, and I've run for office. But I'm worried about our kids' future. I've go to a lot of commissioners meeting. In Lake County, we have a drug court coming in. We are one of two or three counties in the state of 67 that does have a drug court. Honorable Judge Heidi Davis spoke after a gentleman spoke from Tallahassee on Tuesday last week. And there was a liberty tree planted, Senator Maxie was there, but Honorable Fifth Judicial Michael Gray is our public defender. You know, kids need families, kids need to be taught sports, kids need to learn, well, my dad had a paddle with my name on it. He said it's going to hurt me more than it's going to hurt you. You can't touch your kid nowadays.[694.73][694.73](Phone rings). You know, and I just want you to know.
Thank you, thank you very much.[698.82][698.82](Laughter). Finish your thought, go ahead.
Well.
You want us to know.
I do want to say one thing.
No, you're going to finish that thought.[707.13][707.13](Laughter). Finish your thought. You want us to know.
The people walking in darkness, it seemed a great light, of those living in the land of deep darkness, the light is on.
Thank you. That's amazing. Thank you.[718.19][718.19](Pause). Okay, the last three comment cards, before we begin those, are about Coach Edwards. And before we begin, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to make a statement about that.
Yes, there's an item on tonight's HR action items under 9.01 for termination of an employee that's been identified as Mr. Edwards. That employee has requested a hearing that they're entitled to under board policy and Florida statute, so the termination will continue with the reservation that the employee has the right to exercise their due process rights. That will be done either by a hearing officer from DOA or by the board hearing the case itself. In either situation, the board will be asked either as an appeal of DOA or as the original trier of the facts in a hearing to act in a quasi-judicial capacity, which prohibits it from obtaining additional information outside the hearing. So that the, anything that you're going to hear this evening is not evidence, it's not going to be used in any hearing. We are not allowed to cross-examine witnesses, ask anybody why they're testifying about what they are. My recommendation is you sit, and we'll listen to whatever is being offered, with the understanding that what will be determined to be true or false will be what's presented in the hearing, not presented at this meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So Maryliss Perez?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Perez, a 1352 virtual name in Claremont.
Thank you.
There's always a first time for everything. I'm an internal medicine doctor at Central Florida. I've been here for eight years now, and I'm very happy that I'm part of this county. Martin Luther King once says that the mark, the moral arc of the universe is long, but it bends towards justice. We've heard so many negative comments about Coach Edwards, I just wanted to shed a little bit of light of our personal experience as a parent and as all the others who are here present, what we have experienced. In 2019, our children in Eastridge High School had zero college scholarships offered. In 2020, as well, zero students went to college on a football scholarship. This year, being a COVID year, six of our young men were offered college scholarships. I've seen, yes. This man has taken these children to camps on his own personal time. He hasn't ensured that college recruiters have come to the school. He had, because it was postponed unfortunately because of what we're going on through right now, had already set up for another 300 camps, including head coaches to see our children as well. Four of our students were, some of them are here, over at UCF, our local Knights University, visiting the campus with the head coach there as well. I'm sure many of you are aware, maybe not, a lot of our students in the Lake County system, unfortunately, were victims of child pornography. And he helped them get through this process. A lot of them were caught vaping in school, and he asked parents, will you allow me to discipline your child so that the police officer doesn't, and made each and every one of those boys do extra laps around the school to the point that none of them have ever touched vaping again. The reprimand that was open for Mr. Edwards, actually, as she mentioned before, was in Alabama absolutely, which happened in 2016 before he was hired with us, and it was actually posted four years later. It's very disheartening to me. The reason I'm here is because my son came to me crying. He says, Mom, I just want to play. Can we just play? And as you so eloquently said, and so on us before, our students just need to be students, they need to be young people. Let them play. These kids are now scrambling, moving to other schools, going to Lake Mineola, because they're afraid that they're not going to have a stable head coach. As a Christian, and as Reverend here, I believe in mercy and grace, and I think that he deserves a little bit of mercy. I don't know what can be done. I'm not part of the school system. I just told you that I'm an internal medicine doctor. That's my three-minute mark?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm an internal medicine doctor, so I know how to give prescriptions for COVID recommendations and people not to die. But I will tell you this, there must be a recommendation on how to rehabilitate him if you do feel that there is a problem, because his heart is for the children. Believe me.
Thank you, Doctor.[1045.36][1045.36](Applause). Tim Moses? Tim, if you'll give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name's Tim Moses. I live on 1140 Stoneham Drive, Florida. And right now, I would like to talk about the dismissal of my coach, Coach Edwards. I would like to take this time to thank the board for letting me speak, and I would like to say that I know I am ignorant to what's it like to be a man. Into the process that is about to take place, but I am compelled to give you my insight of how most of us feel about our coach, Martez Edwards. As a 15-year-old, I know the concept of fairness, definition, impartial and just treatment or behavior without favoritism or discrimination. My father and mother raised me on this concept my whole life. If we, as a country, elected our former president despite of his past, surely there should be no difference, surely there should be no difference in the judgment of keeping my coach at Eastridge High School, because there is no one else that we, student athletes, would rather stand under than Martez Edwards. You're not only deciding the future of Martez Edwards, but you're leaving an everlasting impression on the student athletes at Eastridge High School of the impact of the student athletes at Eastridge High School of what fairness looks like. There's another impact of this dismissal. I went to Cypress Ridge Elementary and was the only black male in my class. As I continued on to middle school and took some more honor classes, I started seeing others like me, other students. In the 10 years I attended Lake County schools, I have added, I have had the privilege to be taught by three teachers that look like me. And right now, you will be approving the dismissal of one, one that has poured into me on how to focus and prepare for my future, not just for football, but life after football. You may see my coach as expendable, but I see as student athlete that my coach is priceless. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moses.[1209.03][1209.03](Applause). Sharon Bichard? This one?
Is this like a doo-foo?
Yeah, that's right.[1214.03][1214.03](Laughter). Thanks for the body part.
I knew that you would need that. Good evening. My name is Sharon Bichard. I reside at 24941 Rolling Oak Road in Sorento. I'm addressing the board today as a concerned parent regarding the welfare of our children. I do believe that Mr. Edwards does need to be terminated from his employment at Eastridge High School. He does not appear to have the appropriate moral fiber to interact with our children. Next, I would like to address my concerns regarding Mr. Hunt, the assistant principal, and the Eastridge High School head baseball coach, Coach Simmermacher, who refused first to himself as Coach Simmy. My son graduated in May magna cum laude from Eastridge High School. He was a player on the Eastridge High School varsity baseball team. An incident took place at an away game in Ocala that neither his dad nor I were able to attend. It was brought to our attention by a concerned bystander in attendance. It was alleged that during the game in which Eastridge was losing, that Coach Simmy approached my son, who was on the pitcher's mound, with a raised clenched fist, and that his body language appeared aggressive. I'm sure as parents, you can empathize with the emotions that we felt upon hearing this, and you can hear in my voice the emotions that I still have towards this. Just as I would not tolerate, appear bullying my child, I have zero tolerance, as I hope you would as well, for a teacher, coach, person of authority exhibiting bullying behaviors towards my son. We scheduled a meeting at Eastridge High School to discuss our concerns with Coach Simmy, and Mr. Hunt was in attendance as well. To say that Coach Simmy's behavior was volatile at that meeting would be an understatement. Coach Simmy denied these actions, even though there were witnesses to this allegation. We additionally brought up our dissatisfaction that he frequently uses the verbiage mental midgets when he is speaking to his team members. He acknowledged that he does indeed use that terminology as he gets frustrated with the players' behaviors. I reiterated that I found that terminology inappropriate, hurtful, and disrespectful to our students. Mr. Hunt defended Coach Simmy's use of the terminology and stated that depending on the situation, it would be appropriate vernacular. I advised Mr. Hunt that we would just have to agree to disagree, because I didn't find that terminology appropriate in any situation. Even more disheartening regarding this is that Coach Simmy is the ESE teacher at Eastridge High School. As I came to the realization that we were not making headway at this meeting, I advised my next step would be to notify the school board. Mr. Hunt assured us that it wouldn't be necessary, and the situation would be appropriately handled. Since the situation was not appropriately rectified in our opinion, I am here in front of you today on that matter. I would like to request three things. Number one, I would urge you to vote and to terminate Mr. Edwards' employment with no possibility of employment at a Lake County school. Number two, I would ask that you do a thorough investigation of Mr. Hunt and Coach Simmy based on the information that I have provided to you today. And number three, I would ask that you take into consideration whether Mr. Hunt and Coach Simmy are of the appropriate character to be influencing our children, and then put action to your conclusions in an effort to protect our children. There's a Maya Angelou quote, "Do the best you can until you know better, then when you know better, do better." As of today, you know better, so please, for the betterment of our children, do better. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.[1454.78][1454.78](Applause). Maia Moses? Mrs. Moses, if you'll give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Maia Moses, Groveland, Florida. I am a student at Eastridge High School. I am the football manager at Eastridge High School, meaning I'm under Coach Edwards. I make sure everything's organized, whatever he needs, I know where it is. I'm kind of like the brain of, behind him.[1484.71][1484.71](Laughter). I've seen Coach Edwards push the football players and help them be better. He has shown them to be respectful, think before reacting, and showed these boys how to lift each other up instead of using each other as a stepping stool to get where they want. He has shown these boys that they can strive for more and be better than they are. It's terrible to see parents that aren't even connected to Coach Edwards say something wrong about him without seeing how his footprint has led other students. Lastly, before I sit down, that sign over there says, "Is it good for the students?" Coach Edwards, since day one, has told us all that he's not here for teachers, the school board, or anything. He's here to help us, the students, get better, especially his football players, and show them that they can be more than just some other student going to college and doing a regular career. Thank you.[1550.21][1550.21](Applause).
That ends public comments. So reports, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. I'd like to have the reports at the end of the agenda. Mr. Mathias, so I can ask you about an administrative question and depend on how y'all vote tonight.
Okay, so we'll move it on down.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, Superintendent?
I recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.18.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four aye. Okay. Discussion, Superintendent?
The first item, I will turn over to Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir. The matter before the board is tentative approval of revisions to Policy 5610, suspensions, alternative disciplinary placement, and expulsion of students. If there is anyone in the meeting tonight that wishes to speak to this policy, please come forward to the podium at this time. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone coming forward, and believe it appropriate to close public comment.
Superintendent, you have a recommendation?
Recommend tentative approval of revisions to Policy 5610-dash suspensions, alternative disciplinary placement, and expulsion of students. So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four aye.
11.02 is tentative approval of revisions to Policy 5772, weapons and firearms. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this particular policy, then please come forward to the podium at this time. I don't see anyone coming forward. Mr. Chairman, I believe it appropriate to close public comment.
Superintendent, you have a recommendation?
Recommend tentative approval of the revisions to Policy 5772, weapons and firearms.
Board members?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four aye. Okay, Mr. Johnson, you want to move in now?
Yes, sir. As I indicated earlier, on one of tonight's HR items under 9.10 was Mr. Edwards' termination. The vote essentially places him in the position that he has been terminated, subject to his right to have a hearing and appeal, the decision of the board. I have a letter from his attorney. He is exercising his right to appeal, so we will be scheduling the discovery and hearing for that particular appeal. The option, which is at the board's election, is whether to have a DOA hearing officer hear the matter, and the board sit as the appeal to that, or have the board itself hear the matter as a five-member board, and then have that be appealed to a court. I would recommend, based on my understanding of what the allegations are that gave rise to the superintendent's recommendation, that it would probably be best served if the DOA hearing officer was retained to hear the case, and then the board would sit as the appeal to the hearing officer. But we need to go ahead and decide this administrative matter so that we, because there are time schedules that move along fairly quickly for these hearings.
So Mr. Johnson's recommended that we have the DOA hearing officer hear the case, so I'll need a motion to that. So Mr. Johnson's recommended that we have the DOA hearing officer hear the case. So I'll need a motion to that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the DOA hearing officer?
Aye.
Aye.
Four aye.
Thank you.
Okay, superintendent, report?
I have one letter of condolence that was sent to the family of Mercy Hernandez. She's a former teacher at Cypress Ridge Elementary School. So I just wanted to again extend my condolences to her family. Just a few things. Our offices will be closed on Monday, July 5th, in observance of Independence Day. And many of the district staff will be taking that week because it is a short week for us. So it'll be a small crew, should anyone need anything that week. Also, if you didn't have a chance, hopefully everybody saw the article recently in the Daily Commercial about the aviation class that will be starting next year at Eustis High School. This is just one of several new programs that the district will be launching next year. Three of them will focus on aviation. And this one is, in particular, is really exciting. It's a partnership with the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, Emory Riddle Aeronautical University. Students will have a chance to earn industry certifications, get college credit through dual enrollment, and even earn their pilot's certificate while they are still in high school. So it's gonna be an exciting program. We're ready for it to take off. And we'll be highlighting some of our other new programs in the meetings to come because there's so many great ones to talk about that we're just so excited about. So I just wanted to highlight that one. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay. You did the letters.
Already did.
Okay. Board member comments? Sorry, Mr. Dodd?
Sure. Well, that sounds like a very exciting program. I really can't wait to see it get off the ground. You know, the... Last week, as I was having some conversation...
No one laughed. I put in two of them, and I didn't get any response.
It's all about timing. There's a timing piece there.
Shows who they're listening to, right?
Flaps up. Flaps up.
Yeah, last week, I was having a conversation with some folks about some of the innovative CTE programs here in the district. And I think it's really creative and phenomenal that we're able to offer so many unique opportunities for students that would... You don't really find in other districts. And it's always been one of the things that I think we do exceptionally well. But I think it takes a whole new level to not only do that exceptionally well, but then also provide other opportunities for students. So in the same conversation, the same breath, we were talking about ACE and IB and AP Capstone continuing to expand in our district. And when you're able to have so many offerings for advanced students looking for some college-type experiences as well as opportunities in the vocational world to helping prepare students for the workforce, it's really well done that this district is able to do both so successfully. And the other piece item I'd like to highlight is a great positive experience I had and a few others as well at the Ed Foundation. Investiture of the board members. One thing that I walked away as a takeaway there was just the spirit of those folks and how hard they work for the benefit of our teachers and their students. And wow, there was quite the energy coming from those board members that... I guess it just goes to show you why the Ed Foundation in Lake County is just so top-notch and stellar. I had a kind of a quick question on my list here, and I'm not sure if it requires some board talk or consideration here about the budget timeline. I guess in about a month, we're gonna be doing the preliminary budget approval. And I wasn't quite sure if we've got some workshops lined up or if we need to have them. I know we've got the benefit of a new perspective with a new board member, so...
Thank you.
And I always like to ask a lot of questions about the budgets. So I'm not quite sure what the envisioning looked like for that. But I thought maybe if we need to get some other opinions of what people are looking for, that would help you all plan.
I will get you some dates. I'm talking with Mr. Ward. I know he's working on that. And we do want to have a meeting on... I'm just checking the calendar very quickly. On, I believe, July the 19th. I know it's hard during the summertime. That was one of the things that we might possibly bring to that meeting, but we do have a couple of other items for that meeting as well. So I'm gonna make a note of that, and let me know if that works for you all. And I will get with Mr. Ward and send you a timeline of any other budget workshops that will be coming up.
That's a good story.
Thanks.
Thank you. You know, Lake County's not perfect, but we certainly have a lot of good things going on. I am very hardened by our meeting tonight. I think anytime we have a multitude of people from the community that come and share their ideas and their thoughts, that's always a good thing. Sitting up here is not an easy task. It's much harder than I thought it would be because it's very important to me that I know what other people think. And while I may not agree, it's much easier for me to make my decision if I honestly know how they feel. And I agree, it does matter what people think. So I'd like to express gratitude to everyone who came tonight and spoke. I believe I speak for the entire board and the superintendent when I tell you we greatly appreciate it. It helps us. It helps us to make those very hard decisions. I am very excited about our teacher contract. I am thrilled. I look forward to the contracts for our other employees. I think that's a wonderful thing. We know that people need to know where their livelihood is going to come from. And it's always easier to go to work when that has been taken care of. So kudos to all those who worked to make that happen. I do want to mention Chad Frazier. I am extremely proud of him. I think he worked for me for about three days when I was a principal, but I still count him as one of mine. So I am very, very pleased. And I just would like to say that tonight, I am very proud to be a Lake Countyan. I'm very proud to be a member of the Lake County School Board. And I think not only have we done good things for all children in Lake County, but we will continue to do good things for all children in Lake County. And we will continue to work really hard to be very fair and very equitable to all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Burns?
Well, I spoke previously, so I'm good. Thank you.
Are you all good? Okay. I want to take one more opportunity to recognize Mayor Pat Kelly and Mayor John Christiansen. It shows that connection between government outside of our little dome, that we are linked together. And for y'all to come and support us and support our communities is humbling for me. So thank you very much for coming. And speaking of humbling, last Saturday, as the dew was drying on the grass at 8:00 a.m., I sat with 52 of our real heroes, our administrators, who were requalifying for our Guardian program. And those men and women anonymously are first and second line of defense if someone were to try and do harm to our kids. And based on... I was sandwiched in between two administrators, and their shot pattern was like this. Now, I will share with you, my shot pattern was more like this. It was like Killzone. But I looked over, and I was like, "Y'all should be like in the Marines or something, not in the school." So we can take great pride that the spirit is there, that they would put their life on the line, whether they were armed or not, for our kids. But it was serious, and yet there was a camaraderie of purpose. And so that's all I have to report. And with that said, good night.